Welcome everyone to the regular town council meeting town of Cave Creek, Arizona, Monday, October 17th, 2022. Teresa, the role please.
Councilmember McGuire.
Here.
Councilmember Monachino.
Here.
Councilmember Morris.
Here.
Councilmember Roy. Councilmember Sova.
Here.
Vice Mayor Smith.
Here.
Mayor Bunch.
Uh, here, mostly all present accounted for. Therefore, we will go to um, an executive session will be held per purpose of council discussion consultation, direction to and legal advice from the town attorney pursuant to Arizona by statute thirty-eight dash four thirty-one dot zero three. Prince A, Prince three and Prince four regarding the water and wastewater rate and capacity fee study for the Cave Creek Water Desert Hills Water and Cave Creek Wastewater Systems. Do we have a motion to move into each session?
So moved.
All in favor?
I.
All right. Welcome to the regular town council meeting town of Cave Creek, Arizona, Monday, October 17th, 2022. Mr. Rhodes, would you or Councilman-elect Rhodes, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
Of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. Uh, public announcements. Call the public.
Evelyn Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, American Councilmembers. Uh, I should introduce myself, sorry, Evelyn Johnson, Cave Creek, excuse me. I wanted to say an extra special thank you for your attendance last month at our local hand marks. Flat presentation, it was very much appreciated and all the volunteers and the board members and everybody having fun looking at it and.
Oh.
Who were you again? No, I'm kidding, no.
I just wanted to say thank you because it means an awful lot to all of us and the board is expressing their thanks as well. So, thank you. There are no additional speakers.
No additional speakers. All right. In that case, town manager report.
Mayor, members of council, I just want to um, update you on the upcoming green waste collection days. As you are aware, the county no longer collects uh, on a daily basis and they limit it to certain days of the year and in October of twenty-two, we have October nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, and October twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-nine are the green waste collection dates that are coming up. I know we've had a lot of rain, so you may have additional growth at your property and if you can clean that up and keep that it it will be helpful during the hotter months when we need to keep the properties cleared because of fire danger. So, um, again, October nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, and then twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-nine. And that's over off of Carefree Highway, kind of across the street from the wastewater facility on the south side of of Carefree Highway. And that's it, Mr.
I appreciate that since that last windstorm took over a huge pallivertian. I'm going to be playing with the chainsaw evenings later this week. Be good place to be, have me able to take that stuff.
Mayor, what's the proper procedure if I have a question or a request of our town manager?
Will you ask me what the proper procedure is and then I say, go ahead, councilman?
Thank you. Uh, madam manager, uh, we're missing the sign that got knocked down. Do we have a timeframe for its reinstallation?
Uh, the sign that was taken out by a single vehicle accident?
Yeah, it's gone, obviously. The ones that the scout put in many, many years.
No, we do not have a timeline, but it was Thursday.
We're hoping to get the insurance money for that and.
It hasn't even been filed yet. That's recovery from the person who hit it.
Okay, I realize that. I just wanted an update.
Yeah, we will. It goes automatically through their insurance and that does take time. But in terms of rebuilding it and that we haven't talked about the timeframe for that yet.
So that was a beautiful hundred thousand dollar monument sign.
Councilman, if I bring you a bunch of newspapers and the flour and water paste, you want to make us a temporary one until we get a new one?
I'll have the time.
Yeah, you will. He's not wanting right now, is he? Good. Okay. All right. We're going to move on to the consent agenda then, which is the approval of the October third, twenty twenty-two regular council meeting minutes. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
All those in favor, stick your hands up.
Mayor, may I have a question on the minutes?
Oh, yeah.
Page eleven of one ninety-nine.
We got to take, we got to take it off of the consent agenda first. Okay, we're moved. It's removed from the consent agenda. Go ahead, councilman. Page what?
Eleven of one ninety-nine. Somewhere around line two, 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 one. I made a question to the commissioner and I asked for the commission's response to the petition that was presented with a hundred and fifty-five citizens who were opposed to the project. That's not in the minutes. Can we somehow amend that?
I can bring them back if you guys would like to continue.
I can't hear you.
If you would like to continue them, I can.
Yeah, let's go ahead and continue that and and add that, add those comments in there. So Councilman Monachino is uh, is happy with that. All right.
One further comment?
I only gave you one.
Page, page twelve, somewhere around two, two sixty-nine, line two seventy. Now, I had made the comment that I needed more information with regard to this uh, motion and as a result, I voted no. So if we could just slip in that I requested more information.
Right, and that covered it then?
That, that, that's it. Thank you, Mayor.
You're gonna have to move the numbers around for you. Now you know that. All right, so we'll table those until uh, till next meeting or whenever you bring them back to us, it'll be fine. Move on to general, general agenda.
We adopt, given those uh, changes?
No, we're gonna, we're gonna make changes to the actual text, so they gotta come back. Uh, move on to general agenda item number one, which is council discussion, possible approval, transfer of one million nine hundred forty-nine thousand seven hundred and seventy-six dollars and four cents. State and local fiscal recovery funds, Prince SL F R F, from the grant fund twenty revenue account twenty dash zero 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 one zero five dash nine four two two to the Cave Creek Water Fund Revenue Account five zero dash zero five zero one three zero dash nine four two two. Surely I'll bet you're gonna tell us all about this, aren't you?
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Last year in fiscal year twenty twenty-two and this year in fiscal year twenty twenty-three, the town received two equal payments of state and local fiscal recovery funds. They're also known as ARPA. These funds total one million nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars and were booked to grant fund twenty revenue. These grant funds may be used for a newly allowed category for water and sewer projects. Staff has determined the best use for the funds is the Phoenix Interconnect Project. The auditors recommended that the funds be transferred from the grant fund to the Cave Creek Water Fund where they are budgeted for the Phoenix Interconnect Project. Staff requests council to approve the transfer of one million nine hundred and forty-nine thousand seven hundred and seventy-six dollars and four cents the ARPA funds from the grant fund twenty revenues to the Cave Creek Water Enterprise Fund fifty for specific use, the Phoenix Interconnect Project.
Which will offset the drain on the regular general fund for that project?
Yes.
Really like that. Count a question from council? We have none. Okay.
I'll make a motion.
With public comment?
No comment.
Oh, there is no public comment. No, but you don't have any? Okay, they'll make a motion.
Motion to approve the transfer of one million nine hundred and forty-nine thousand seven hundred and seventy-six dollars and four cents state and local fiscal recovery funds, S L F R F, from the grant fund twenty revenue account twenty dash zero 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 one zero five dash nine four two two to the Cave Creek Water Fund Revenue Account five zero dash zero five zero one three zero dash nine four two two.
Second. Comment?
No comment.
Comment? No. Well, this probably has something to do with money. We probably ought to do a roll call on this one.
Councilmember Sova.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember McGuire.
Yes.
Councilmember Monachino.
Yes.
Councilmember Morris.
Yes.
Mayor Bunch.
Uh, yes, motion carries six zero. Thank you. General member two, council discussion, possible approval of A and T T eight, too many Ts, AT&T lease renewal for five years commencing July first, twenty twenty-one to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six. Placed on the agenda by the town engineer. How, tell us all about this, will you?
Well, you guys approved this in two thousand and six. Uh, for the first five years, it was six thousand dollars. I went to, and there's an error in my typing, it went to sixty-six hundred dollars for the next five years. Our renewal stayed at sixty-six hundred dollars. And this period, we're going to get seven thousand two hundred and fifty dollars for the period. Big money, I know, compared to what we just were talking about. But uh, it's for a piece of right away where we lease a piece of our land to what was singular wireless and now AT&T.
It's that little box sitting on the ground you gave us a picture of.
Yes, that little box with the air conditioning unit on top and right next to one of their power poles with a unit on top, yeah.
Question from council? All right, um, there is public comment in this one. David, you got something to tell us about this? Nope, okay.
I have no speakers.
We're back, we're back to council for a motion, please.
I'll make a motion to approve AT&T lease renewal for five years commencing July one, twenty twenty-one to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six.
Second.
Uh, there's seventy-five hundred dollars. We gotta do a voice vote.
Big money.
Councilmember Sova.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember McGuire.
Yes.
Councilmember Monachino.
Yes.
Councilmember Morris.
Yes.
Mayor Bunch.
Uh, yes, motion carries six zero. Thanks, Hal. Thank you. General member three, council discussion, possible approval of town case SPR dash twenty-two dash zero one rare earth gallery two site plan review for the development of a retail sales establishment located east of Cave Creek Road and north of Surrey Road. Subject conditions of approval placed on the agenda by the planning director, Mr. Councilman.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. Uh, this case site plan review application twenty-two dash zero one rare earth gallery two. The applicant is architect Greg Zimmerman. He has a pass. He's out of the country uh, this evening, so.
Just tonight?
Well, no.
Is he coming back?
He, he will be back, yes, hopefully, hopefully soon. Uh, the location of this project is south of the southeast corner of East Blue Ridge Drive and North Cave Creek Road. Uh, if you think about it, it's just south of where the T-Box um, site plan approval was, was granted. The zoning is town core commercial. The project description, the applicant is proposing a commercial retail building on point nine acres with off-street parking in conjunction with the commercial use on point three five acres and associated landscaping. Uh, this is listed as an allowed use. Retail sales establishments are allowed to use within the town core commercial zone with approval of the site plan by town council upon recommendation of the planning commission. The planning commission considered the case at its meeting held September fifteenth and voted six to zero to recommend approval with conditions as contained in exhibit E, which begins on page forty-eight of your packet. The um, case summary outlines um, the, the staff report details compliance with the bulk regulations. For example, the, the building height is less than twenty-five feet from natural grade to the roof line. Uh, the building setbacks are in compliance with the town for commercial zone that they proposed. Lot coverage applicant is limited to sixty percent lot coverage. The applicant proposes only thirty-one percent lot coverage. Landscaping, the applicant is required to provide twenty-five percent landscaping in total on the two different parcels. They're, they're providing thirty-seven percent on uh, the point nine acre parcel and twenty-seven percent landscaping on the, on the um, three tenths of the natural lot. Uh, the access is proposed right in, right out only along Cave Creek Road. There is a median there. The applicant isn't proposing any median cuts or anything. The applicant also intends to, to install two two-way access drives. And the, the last two items that are detailed in the staff report, uh, required parking, based on the size of the structure, they're required to have thirty-nine parking spaces. The applicant is proposing thirty-nine parking spaces. Then as far as screening, the applicant is required to provide a solid method of screening that is at the minimum six feet in height where they are adjacent or butted to residential zones. The applicant is proposing a six-foot high C M U wall along the east property line to meet the required screening requirement as well as adequately screening trash enclosures and the H V A C units with a solid metal method of screening. It should be noted that there was discussion at the planning commission about headlights and, and glare and it should be noted that this is a nine to five uh, business operation. They, they're not expected to have nighttime clientele. Uh, the two things that the applicant has yet to contemplate but is aware of, uh, being familiar with the town's requirements is outdoor lighting. Uh, they stated that they don't have any plans or intentions to install any outdoor parking area lighting. Staff will review for compliance, the electrical plans when those are submitted to make sure that their outdoor lighting, building mounted lighting is compliant. And the last item is signage. Uh, they do show a, a space where they would propose a monument sign. They're allowed per the zoning to do so. Um, but they, they didn't do a detail of what the sign is gonna look like or anything, but once again, they're aware of the requirements as far as the height and the square footage that's allowed for monument signs. The applicant is also aware that just because uh, site plan approval may be granted this evening, uh, they, they're still required to submit a building permit application that complies with all the applicable building and fire codes, gradient drainage requirements by the town engineer, water and wastewater requirements by the town utilities director in order to obtain a permit. So um, that's all staff has to report on this case more. Thank you.
Question from council?
Mayor?
You know, I, I did look that way. I'm not sure which finger went up first, but we'll go ahead. Well, actually, you, you're both. Councilman Sova, I'm going to, I'm going to allow Vice Mayor Smith to.
It's only right. Yeah, it's proper.
This is an easy one anyways. From reviewing the plans and everything, it, it appears to me that the wall at the eastern side of the building that's on the alleyway will not be breached for traffic in and out for any reason whatsoever. It's a solid wall.
Uh, there actually, there, there is um, means of ingress and egress using, utilizing that alley. They're proposing a four-foot wide easement uh, similar to what the T-Box property owner agreed to so that we would have um, full access because that is a town, town property back there.
Okay, I thought that the uh, I thought that the zoning ordinance said that there needed to be a wall between business and residences.
Where adjacent? A budding, so there's a, there's a public street in between this property and the residence.
That's a de-nominated public street?
Yes.
Yeah. What's its name?
Alley.
Alley.
Short for Allison.
Thank you.
Allison Way. Councilman Sova.
Mr. Councilman, I had, would have had a lot more questions, but you did a fine job in explaining everything at the T-Box presentation. So I know about the alleyway, the increased right-of-way, uh, the neighborhood, et cetera, and the history there. So just a couple of questions, maybe three. Would you explain to me uh, since, you know, this is not an architectural set of plans. It's a, it's a site plan. But my, my curiosity has the best of me because it has to, it'd be pertaining to the parking regulation. I understand the first floor and the second, there's going to be a partial second floor which are gonna, it's gonna be used for office and or storage and also in the site data notes, there's gonna be uh, a gallery. Would you explain to me what a gallery is on the second floor?
Uh, I don't believe there's any gallery space on the second floor. The second floor is a limited portion of the foot, the overall footprint. And that's just dedicated for staff and office. So I, there's, there's, it's, it's not even accessed through the main building. You've got to go outside and up the stair.
So I'll.
Around the back.
Outside of the two-story portion of it, uh, that will all be, uh, they'll have a high ceiling in there, um, you know, for stacking things.
That is correct.
Okay, uh, with that being said, uh, so you have thirty-nine spots that are required. Thirty-nine have been presented. And there's a different calculation as I saw here for the second floor requirements versus the first floor requirement. So I just want to make sure that that's been adhered to and thirty-nine is the right number for the first floor vis a vis the second floor requirements, which I think one of them has a higher requirement.
That is correct. So um, office, actually, office retail is parked at the same one space for two hundred and fifty square feet of gross floor area. I believe though what is a little difficult to, to read is they, they provide the parking based on the occupancy, which is a, a building code term, and that's how the, the building and fire safety official looks at it when they're reviewing the plans. So he's, he's essentially what the architect has done in this case is just cut that step out and already put it on the plan. So it makes it a little bit confusing, but thirty-nine spaces, it's got a, if, if the second floor within the building changes, that's something that we'll look at during the building permit review. Um, if they wanted to do a little coffee shop, that would obviously increase the amount of parking required for that. So those are all things that uh, we verify at the time of the building permit application.
Okay, so when I see this note with the parking requirements, the one spot per two hundred and fifty square feet, uh, I assume that's to be the retail area or the office area on the second floor and then the other uh, where you have the one spot for five hundred, I believe that's merchandise for sale and or storage.
Storage, correct.
Okay, so you've calculated all of that and it, it subject any changes. This is the correct number.
That is correct.
Okay. Uh, and then there's a loading bay and I believe that's, doesn't show that clearly out here. That would be uh, on the northeast corner of the building as best I can figure out.
Yes, it's got a, a call out of number seventeen.
Right, right. It's note seventeen. So there'll be a large overhead door there and, and the parking spaces in that area will allow a, a larger truck to maneuver in there. I assume you've taken that into account. Uh, my last question is, at his current facility on Cave Creek Road, there's a lot of uh, outdoor storage that he has for his wares, sometimes in our right-of-way. Although he's been good on that lately. My question is, uh, is he gonna, is he proposing any outside displays or storage of his rocks and, and geodes and whatnot? And will the store be all retail or just a small portion of it? To where he'll be able to store everything inside, not outside, as he does in the store uh, he has in town? Or do you know?
Um, I, I can't confirm what the post-developed plan is for his business model. Uh, what I can speak to is the, the site plan does indicate uh, retention areas, landscape areas and all of that. So I mean, it, as long as he is not um, filling in or causing any failure of his uh, retention countermeasures, then um, the, the rocks, so.
And our town marshal will be able to check on that every day on his way to work.
Much better. And usually twice on weekends.
Right. Thank you. That's all my questions.
Councilman Monachino.
Thank you, Mayor. I just have a couple of questions that my um, colleagues failed to address.
It's possible we knew the answers.
Remote, but.
That's gonna hurt.
With, with regard to the alley, on the other side, there are residents and I see here there are one, two, three, four, five, six, seven trees planted. I don't, I don't, is, is there a fixed number? Or how do we get to, to seven? Could there be fifteen trees and I'm looking for some kind of um, barrier or, or uh, protection for the residents?
Well, um, the technical design guidelines specify uh, how many trees per street frontage uh, along Cave Creek Road are required. And then the um, they also specify how many trees per, based on the number of parking spaces are also required. So that's, that's where that number comes from.
That's on Cave Creek Road.
That's just for the entire project.
For the entire project.
How many trees are required along Cave Creek Road and then overall, how many additional trees are required for the rest of the project and that's based on parking spaces?
Okay, so we can't require, we could suggest more trees.
As we do.
Yeah, okay, all righty.
Councilman, you're referring to the alleyway and, and, and the distance to those houses?
Yeah.
Uh, site inspection would more than likely prove out that almost all of those homes affected by this have at least a six-foot block wall along their backyard. So they wouldn't see a tree anyway unless it was well grown.
My trees are bigger than six.
They wouldn't see it after the windstorm either.
Well, just a, just a comment here with regard to the um, planning commission minutes that are included here. Page fifty-eight of one ninety-nine. Line three, two, two. This is an administrative issue and we will discuss it in detail when we get to commission discussion. There's no commission discussion. I don't know if it was meaningful or not. Anyway, final comment on line three, three, seven. Commissioner Anderson asked about water supply. They do have a will-serv letter. And why would they not get water?
Based on the uh, amendments to the town code that was done earlier this year, um, if an applicant requires, is it, it's based on water meter and the volumetric analysis of their demand. So if they, if they project to exceed their water usage, then they would be required to bring additional water resources to the town.
Okay, all right.
So a will-serv letter is a non-binding. It says we have the infrastructure in place. Uh, you would have to do X, Y, Z to improve upon that infrastructure to provide service for your development. However, tell us what your development is exactly, how many sinks, toilets, et cetera, you have and uh, what your, what your water use is. Is that correct, Sean, in a nutshell?
And if they exceed that, that's.
Yep.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
Councilman McGuire.
Um, well, we have an opportunity to um, express our concern that this have desert compatible colors. I see all that. Sometimes the builders supply us with color elevations and this one's completely black and white.
Yeah, you know, given the track record of the applicant, uh, the architect who's done many projects in town, I, I, I don't expect it to be glass and steel.
Okay. And, and I would also express concern that was expressed by Councilman Sova that we be very conscious of the incursions upon uh, town property with uh, with the materials they want to sell.
Not just for this applicant, but for all, all property owners.
Well, it's this applicant that I particularly noticed, sir.
Anything else from council? Okay, yeah, Luke, I'm looking at these uh, conditions of approval on that, that's forty-eight on our page and, and looking at those, you know, I've been here a long time. Uh, and I don't mean sitting in this chair tonight. I mean a long time. A lot of these look. A lot of these look boilerplate. How, how many of those are actually on every single site plan that we see? All of them?
Uh, yeah, it's, it's very, um, few and far between. I mean, I could, I, I reported this to the planning commission because I was asked about it. It was in the discussion section. Um, so we, when we give you minutes, they're only the minutes relative to the case. So we don't pub, we don't give you the whole planning commission minutes book. So I'm sorry about that, but, um, I can just quickly go through them. There are seventeen total conditions. Number one was generated by staff a long time ago, basically says what you see is what you get, except as maybe modified by these conditions. Uh, two is a restatement of what is in the zoning ordinance. Three was generated by staff and was borne out cases like estates at Chimenee where their site was compliant. They got approved. But they could not get all other plans compliant, like the grading drainage, um, was a mess. Um, so it's basically just a disclaimer, just because you made it this far, doesn't mean you can go out and start building tomorrow. Um, numbers four, five, six, and seven are restated from the technical design guidelines. Number eight is a restatement from the town code. Number nine is from Arizona revised statutes. Number ten was developed by the town's utilities director. Eleven is a restatement from technical design guideline. Number two, grading drainage. Twelve is restated from the zoning ordinance. Thirteen staff generated. And it's actually something that we apply to every permit, whether it's a tool shed or Walmart. Number fourteen staff generated to kind of explain how to be compliant with number thirteen. Uh, fifteen was generated by the building fire official. Sixteen was modified by the utilities director based upon the recent changes to the town code, which we discussed. Then, uh, essentially number seventeen is a development agreement waiver. So that's what that basically says is if an applicant doesn't feel they are responsible to make certain offsite improvements, they can petition the town through the town manager, utilities director, or town engineer to get certain fees waived. And those seventeen conditions are pretty tried and true.
On everything.
Yeah. And they're, and they're really just restatements from other codes and ordinances that we have adopted, but it's really just the conditions of approval are just to let the applicant know, um, that those things are there and that they need to comply with those.
It, to your knowledge, in, in Arizona, how many jurisdictions actually have a site plan go before, that, that where, where staff does all the legwork and all that stuff? How many of those site plans actually go before a planning commission and also, uh, council?
Um, I, I looked at fourteen different, uh, communities. Town council doesn't review site plan. Um, unless either, uh, a decision by another body is aggrieved or, um, and, and council wants to settle it. Or they're administrative. Um, some maybe half just go to a planning commission or some other type um, advisory board for their, for their approval. And really what they're looking at has to do with discretionary items such as architectural or aesthetic characteristics. Um, you know, an example is like flagstaff. They've got a form-based zoning code, which means if your neighbor built five feet from the property line, then you've got to build eight feet. And that's what form-based zoning is. It's, it's a mess. I'm glad we don't have it here, but. So yeah, to answer your question, it's, um, in a large part staff and, and then the ones I looked at, staff essentially does all the work, goes to the, um, either the commission for approval and it's done there or it's administrative strictly. And just comes in as building permit. It's reviewed for compliance with the zoning ordinance.
So, so basically if an applicant wanted something that was out of the ordinary, that was beyond the ordinances and the, and the, uh, current rules or whatever, that'd be a board of adjustment case?
They're requesting a variance, sure.
Yeah, variance. Okay. Alright, I did, I'm just curious about that, because all these years I've been seeing the same, the same ones over and over and over again. I just wonder what was going on there. So. Now we're gonna flip back here and I know there's public comment on this. I just can't find it yet.
Dusty Rhodes. For public comment.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman, um, Dusty Rhodes, four-one, four oh-three, North Old Stage Road, Cave Creek. Got a couple of questions. Building a two-story building, it's got lights or it's got the windows on the second floor. How's the light pollution going to affect the people who live behind? An alleyway, what is it, eight feet wide? That light pollution is going to bleed over. Is it going to affect any of those houses? If it is, what's his plan to ameliorate? The second piece of it is, is he going to be dark skies compliant when he finally does the, the plan here? If you go downtown right now, I can guarantee you that current gallery is lit up like a Christmas tree. So I'd just like to kind of know what protecting the people who live back there, because that is kind of an annoyance to them. And I, I know it's probably not on the site plan, but how do we make sure that's done? Thank you.
No additional speakers?
No additional speakers. Wonder what David filled one out for. Okay. We're, uh, we're, we're, uh, we're back to council.
Should those concerns be addressed by?
Well, I, I don't know. Mr. Sims. Can I, can I ask the?
You can ask.
Director.
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Councilman, will you address those concerns? I don't, I know that we have lighting ordinances that basically preclude or, or actually are in existence before dark skies. Uh, yeah, go ahead.
And, and more restrictive. My dad. Um, so the, the alley is, is twenty-four feet wide. Uh, yes, the building is two-story, um, but as stated earlier, I don't anticipate any, any nighttime use, um, for that building. So, um, I don't even think there's a, an east-facing window um, on the second, on the second floor where the office is proposed. Um, and then what was there another?
What was the other concern?
Dark sky, yeah. And our, I put our zoning, I put our zoning ordinance up, up against, um, anything that's come out of the dark sky. Um, uh, people in the last few years, uh, as being more restrictive than, than what they require. We don't allow dusted-on lighting. Uh, all lighting has to be fully shielded and cast downward. Council just adopted, uh, or amended the zoning ordinance, I believe, last year. Now I'm trying to think. I've been doing this too long, I guess. A few years ago, um, reducing the correlated color temperature for all outdoor lighting. Um, so.
We changed the Kelvin to what? Yeah.
Yeah, twenty-seven hundred, I think. We reduced it to the cap on. So, yeah, I don't, um, I don't anticipate any um, anything that's going to be outside of what the, the ordinance requires.
Okay. Okay. So now we're back to council for a motion, please. Mayor. Yeah. Councilman Monacino?
Motion to approve town case SPR dash two-two dash zero-one dash rare earth gallery two site plan review for the development of a retail sales establishment to be located east of Cave Creek Road and north of Surrey Road. Subject to the conditions of approval.
Second.
Comments, Councilman. I'm laughing because he, he turned his, turned his, uh, his microphone on and Silva beat him to it again.
You gotta be quick.
Yeah, go ahead, Councilman.
I was on the planning commission when, uh, Mr. Health and first came to Cave Creek with his rare earth gallery project. And, um, I remarked at the time. This was a business model. I thought he could have opened up in any part of the valley and it would have been a success. I hold that opinion today. It's the same business model. He's doing great. I'm in favor of it.
Councilman Silva, comment?
No comments.
Just, just, just as long as you beat the vice mayor.
That's the important.
Yeah, from council. Okay, all those in further motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I was clearly have it. Thank you, council. Item number four. Presentation by Wildan Financial Services and Walker Consulting LLC and discussion on the updates to the draft water and wastewater rate and capacity fee study for the Cave Creek Water, Desert Hills Water and Cave Creek Wastewater Systems. Town manager.
Mayor, members of council, unfortunately, um, Kevin Burnett is unable to be here, um, this evening with us. He lost his father just a few days ago unexpectedly. So, um, the presentation is to go over the changes, um, that we've made uh, based on the discussion the last time that we reviewed, uh, the document for, um, rates and capacity fees. And so, Sean is going to take us through those.
Do you mean mayor council? Sorry, we have the B team here tonight. So, um, next slide, Brian. Uh, so as, as Carrie indicated, uh, last time we checked in with council on the, uh, the, uh, utility rates and capacity study was actually September nineteenth when we asked council to adopt the motion of intent to raise the rates and, and adopt new capacity fees. That's, uh, set the sixty-day time clock, uh, to, uh, get the public hearing set. It's an actual date for the hearing. And then it also required us to do a, um, to post the final report thirty days prior to that public hearing. So at that meeting date, we heard some, uh, suggestions and questions from council, uh, for some changes, some final modifications to make on the rate study. So that's what I was planning to go through tonight. I'm actually gonna take a little bit more time to go through some of the, now, again, for edu- education, actually, for whoever's listening tonight and also, um, induce an outreach of why we're doing this, uh, because some of the rates are, uh, fairly substantial. Um, but the goal of tonight, there's no action, was to come back and present the, uh, the modifications that we heard from the nineteenth meeting and, uh, get those into the report that needs to be published by this week to meet the statutory timeframe that we currently have in front of us. So the rates we're talking about apply for, uh, the utility rates for Cave Creek Water, um, and Cave Creek Wastewater System as well as their Desert Hills Water System. Uh, they were last updated in, uh, twenty twenty. Before that, it was actually March of twenty nineteen. We're also, as part of this report, we're looking to update the capacity fees, which were last updated by the town in twenty fourteen. Next slide, Brian. So the overall goals of the, uh, was to look at a ten-year forecast. That's the ten-year forecast, both revenue and expenditures on the utility funds, to make sure that we can work towards, uh, and, uh, actually adopting true enterprise funds for the town. Uh, we're looking to split the costs fifty-fifty or as close as we could, uh, with that, uh, uh, being the base charges that we charge our customers and, and we charge a volume act to customers. And it's talking specifically about rates now and not capacity fees, but the, the fix is between, um, the, the cost to keep the lights on at our, our facilities versus the, uh, movement of water around and actually the charges for the water or the wastewater that we receive from our customers. Um, we did want to make sure that the revenues generated, um, would provide for operation, uh, ongoing operating and capital costs. Uh, what I mean by that is, uh, we don't, we do know that costs are increasing, just the base cost of our CAP water is going up because of the shortage, because there's less water available. But some of the fixed costs, the CAP actually has essential Arizona project, means that our costs are, are going up. Uh, we have utility rate increases ourselves, uh, with APS to pay. Um, and we have chemical costs, et cetera. So the, the cost of just operating the system just goes up as we sit still. Um, and then also we have our capital improvement projects that we actually plan to, to improve the system. Some of those projects are to, um, maintain the existing infrastructure that we have and make sure it's properly operated and maintained. And some of the capital improvements are actually things that we can, uh, are being built to increase the capacity. But, uh, again, the rates are helping to offset that. The capacity, capacity fees build into that. So we're bought, we're adding extra capacity, uh, for something, A, I E, buying a pump, booster pump that can feed more users in the end result. And that actually is eligible for capacity fees. Uh, but we do need to maintain the system. We need, do need to do just capital upgrades. And the town actually has adopted some financial goals um, that, uh, hoping the new rates will help us move us towards, they're not going to happen overnight. Uh, but we have things like the debt surface coverage of one point two times our revenues. We have to maintain that with the largest project we have upcoming is, is the new city of Phoenix Interconnect. We have to make sure that we can meet the debt service coverage ratio so we can, uh, go after our whiff of funding that we've requested for that project. Um, uh, we want to have, uh, revenue sufficient to our operation and maintenance. Uh, right now, especially on the wastewater side, and that's why, uh, when I get to the tables, you'll see the wastewater side is projected to, uh, to have the heart, largest increase. We do not currently operate as a true enterprise fund. We're actually offsetting the cost. So we want to make that, uh, move towards making these true enterprise funds. Desert Hills Water, Cave Creek Water, we're very close, um, waste, on the wastewater side, we're not. So that's why you'll see the largest increase on the wastewater side. And a long-term goal that, that we've talked about with council is actually having revenues equal to three months of operating expenses. So with this race that we're proposing and was being proposed in the study is actually five years worth of rate increases that would work us towards it. So that's something that more towards the end of the five-year cycle. If adopted the current rates as they sit right now, that would get us towards having that goal. And that helps us in case of things like, uh, people can't pay their water bills, et cetera. We still need to pay our operational expenses. We still need to make our payroll to keep our employees. Uh, but as, uh, revenues can, can, can fluctuate, having that as a reserve in hand is actually a good goal. And that's actually something that the council has asked us to work towards. Next slide, Brian. So with the study, uh, we had to address several issues. Uh, when twenty twenty, um, the conclusion of what was happening with the care free, the five hundred and fifty care free counts wasn't finalized. That now is, so the study captures that. That project is ongoing. Um, we have, there's probably a hundred accounts that have transferred over. And as it's just a foreshadowing, in two weeks, we're gonna have to have a shutdown of our Galloway Booster Station, which actually, um, is what feeds the eastern part of our system on Cave Creek Road. Um, that will impact Stagecoach Village because, uh, there have three disconnects going on over one night. So that's something that we're moving forward with and we'll make sure that those customers are aware of, of that upcoming event. Um, we did want to address the tie-in water with Desert Hills. Um, we want to make sure that Desert Hills is paying its fair proportional share, largely because the Desert Hills customers, as some people may not be aware, uh, since the town's bought the Desert Hill system, we've actually had to supplement their water supplies. Started off, um, uh, just over half of their water was actually coming from the Cave Creek system. But as the wells, uh, production has decreased in the last, uh, several years out there, we've had as much as seventy percent of the water in Desert Hills is actually supplying our customers is coming from the Cave Creek Water System. So we will make sure that they're aware of that and, and, and that they're, they're paying the fair share of the capital cost that we need to do to make sure that the system is, is upgraded, to make sure that we can continue to meet that ongoing supply. It's one of the reasons we adopted the, um, twenty twenty-one water resource policy was to make a discussion because we can't control growth at Desert Hill system, but the council, uh, allowed us to put a policy in place that we're really trying to maintain the existing customers and service the existing customers and not, uh, add new customers out there. But even with the customers we have, our, our water supplies to those customers in Desert Hills, the three wells is declining. So we have to make sure that we can make sure the system can, the Cave Creek system can provide water for them. And the, uh, leading that leads into the, a wheeling rate to Desert Hills. And, uh, I know that you've heard this, but it's been over a month. I think it's good to, to bring this in is that, uh, the, the Desert Hills, we were able to secure just last year a new CAP non-Indian agricultural water supply for them. The original request was done over almost ten years ago by the town and the request was to get about thirteen hundred acre feet, which would have more than made up for their supplies currently were, uh, last year, we said seven hundred and seventy acre feet to Desert Hills. Or their total demand was seven hundred and seventy acre feet. But after the ten-year process, we ended up with three hundred and eighty-six acre feet, which is less than what we typically send to them. And it's also a lesser priority on the, on the central Arizona project. So as, uh, we are in tier shortages right now, um, uh, next year, uh, we've already been told by CAP that we can only get seventy-five percent of that water. So, uh, we have to factor that in. But, um, the, the thought process we've had moving forward is, is a wheeling rate is that if, um, Desert Hills were having those customers pay for the, the back capital costs and the ongoing capital and operating costs of the, the, um, non-Indian agricultural water. But Cave Creek Water System has to pay to treat and deliver that water and deliver that to them. So that's one rate. But if they have to dip into the town's municipal and industrial water supply, which was, was originally purchased and set aside for the Cave Creek Water System, then there's another fee because we actually have to have them at that time pay for that water. So it's part of the study, we're actually having two rates developed that they're in the report. Next slide, Brian. So we've come back to council a couple of times with this. Uh, early this, uh, calendar year, we actually, uh, talked about the project assumptions. Uh, that was in a meeting in January twenty-fourth. In August twenty-first, we actually had a work session to talk about the draft rates, capacity fees. Um, um, then we actually came back in September twelfth. We had a work session and that was a deep rate. Um, uh, and then that was followed up by a, a work session on September nineteenth, which was to adopt the intent to notice rate increases. So as tonight, we're actually, uh, um, there's no action, uh, but we wanted before we published a report, uh, which is required by the end of this week, um, to come back to council and point out some of the changes that we have made since, uh, the notice of intent was adopted. Brian, next slide. So one thing that we had heard, um, is, uh, through the iterations is, uh, we looked at the, the base fees that were being charged and we're also looking at the volumetric fees. And the one thing, the last iteration that council asked us to look at was to make sure that, um, we didn't look at, uh, the, the first, based on the revenue projections and, uh, um, we, in some cases, some users would experience a slight. We, in some cases, some users would experience a slight decline for the first one to two years of the study, and then to to then to see an increase in the outer years. Council offices, partly which is sort of education, sort of goes counter to the the conservation effort that we're trying to promote. It's just to keep rates the same right now and not have anybody lose what. That had the effect of doing is generating a little more revenue at the front end of the program. Which when you look out at the five years, then said that we could, we didn't need as much rate increases. It really only impacted the Cave Creek Water Accounts when we did the calculations. And it's highlighted by this table here, which is showing the projected. Rate increases. And this is overall sort of the average user account between September, when we did the adoptions and tonight. I mean, Cave Creek Water, you can see that initially we're looking for next fiscal year, starting January first. We'd have, we're requesting eleven percent increase by by looking at balancing the first couple of years that was able to drop down to eight percent. And you can see the next two years, instead of eleven, five, three, 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 we're going out to eight, four, four, three, for the five year cycle. Desert Hills Water, there was no change. And Cave Creek Wastewater, there was no change. And I'll highlight, yeah, Cave Creek wastewater is is looks to be startling, the sixty percent rate increase, but that's largely because we. Most of our users on the on the wastewater side are actually residential accounts that get just gets. Are charged a base fee, so there's no volumetric calculation. And as I indicated before, the wastewater fund, we actually were trying to work towards making it true enterprise funds. So while the debt services on some of the capital improvements are being paid by other means, we want to make sure that the operation and maintenance is actually paid for and covered by the enterprise fund itself. So that's requiring us to do this. This leap up in cost, and I want to make sure that our customers are aware of that justification behind it. Next slide, Brian. So I'll quickly go through some of the base rate changes. And again, you'll see they're summarized. When we tried to balance out the base rates, the only ones that really were changing were the Cave Creek, and that's the ones that in the last projection were shown in the first year, the two. Was decreasing a little bit, and we took council's advice and made sure that they did not decrease, but stayed at least level one up. So you can see the base rates, and that's the base that we charge for a a monthly user to for the to have a meter and a connection to our system regardless of usage. Because we have to make sure that we can maintain the capacity and maintain the system to to feed the any demand that that user has. And as you can see, when we balance those out a little bit, you can see some of the rates for inch and a half and and two inch rates. Actually decreased from the last projections of September. And you'll see in the future, it actually balances out with the the volumetric rates. But no case did they decrease beyond what we had projected. The volumetrics, you'll see that more more apparent. Next slide, Brian. So when we talk volumetric rates, we actually have different rate categories. We do have single family. We requested and council offices, the multifamily and single family, we treat the same. We break them out from accounting standpoint. They are different land use and allows us to look at things. And there's some different reporting requirements with things like the Arizona Department of Water Resources. So it's good for us to have that. But again, Cave Creek, single family, you can see in the one column titled September, you can see that last time around, we were proposing a slight decrease in some of the upper tiers. Or actually all the tiers. The lower tiers. And then with the new projections and the new report, you'll see the October is we're keeping them the same as the existing rates. Which brings in a little bit more revenue upfront in the program. Just to quickly highlight the fact that we do have five rate tiers, and that's that's based on the volumetric use for each user that month. So again, you pay a base rate to have that meter and to make sure that we have a system that can maintain and provide you water. And then you pay us for the volume, the volume of water that you consume, which is the cost of us delivering and treating that gallon or 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 more water to you. We bill in thousand gallon increments. So when you look at this, the first ten thousand gallons you get, you pay three dollars and nine cents. Per thousand gallon entrance to ten thousand, and it gets more expensive above that. So. If you're a user above fifty thousand gallons, you're not paying fifteen dollars and sixty six cents per thousand gallons on your total bill. You actually, you build up based on the tiers. Next slide, Brian. This is the the commercial accounts, again, similar to residential. Desert Hills didn't change, but commercial did. We balanced those out. Again, there was a couple of categories where it looked like the first projections based on the revenue needs. Shaw that for the first year, we could have a little bit of a decrease in volume, but we kept it level. Desert Hills commercial did not change. And then we have Cave Creek. We actually have another category, the common areas and irrigation. There was no changes there. Next slide, Brian. And then we had the last one is the. Commercial pools. And then again, were no changes from the last iteration that we proposed to council. Next slide, Brian. One thing that's new and didn't make it in time to the report, because we've been gathering information, is a new proposed Desert Hills stamp rate. So the town actually operates two standpipes. The one in Cave Creek actually has is under contract specifically to some customers in Cave Creek on the west side that. We refer to as the West Side Domestic Improvement, Water Improvement District, West Side Web. Area. And after getting some direction from council, we looked at that, and we thought it might be difficult to co mingle the customer base. And the only reason we'd be looking at doing that is because the equipment. At the Desert Hill Standpipe is actually purchased and installed prior to the town buying the system at the end of two thousand and six. So it is functionally obsolete and actually recently failed. So staff have been working to keep it functioning for a number of years now. The three and a half years I've been with the town even before that. But we're at the time that we have to make the investment to change that equipment out. There's a small number of users. There's only ten users on the system. So we didn't think it was fair for have the other users pay for the cost of the service that other customers are getting. Right now, we've looked at and we've worked with the vendors, similar vendors, the same vendor that we currently have at our Water Ranch facility. So we have some benefits and and sharing of costs. We have a one time fee that we pay that vendor for the annual maintenance or sort of this the service. For the system and by adding another water station doesn't add any extra cost to that. And it gives the benefit of us having be our cut client customer service staff actually be able to see the usage. Remotely, where they currently can't do that at the Desert Hill system. They physically, before the system failed, had to go down and and pick that information up. So after going back forth through the vendor, we do have a flow meter that we can reuse, and we do have a control valve that we can reuse, and we have a spare control valve. We didn't want to buy all new, so we've been able to get the cost down to about sixteen thousand dollars is what it would take. We expect about a ten year, when you factor in a ten year lifespan, that comes down to an additional fee of thirteen dollars and thirty three cents per month. Over a caught over on top of the base fee, and those users have been being charged the current monthly base fee based on our residential account, one inch or smaller out in Desert Hills, which was. Fifty five dollars and seventy cents. That is being projected to go up to seventy dollars and eighty five, four cents. So we're asking before before we publish a report, we put this in as as a new standpipe rate. Proposals, what we're doing now would allow us to generate the revenues to pay for this equipment and 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 not spread the burden among the other users out there, because it's only ten accounts currently. So it's not fair. That's the way we thought we'd do it this way. Next slide, Brian. So our next steps, again, on the nineteenth, we didn't notice to intend to raise rates in past fees. That's been completed. By the twentieth, so the end of this week, we have to publish the final report that gets thirty days prior to the public hearing as required by statute. So in November twenty first is when we're looking to have the council meeting. To one is to adopt the rates, the rates are done by resolution. So there's, it's one action adopts the rates. Staff is proposing or will be proposing that we come back and actually adopt multiple year rate increase. With current projections, the last time in twenty twenty, we just adopted the one year when actually we had forecasts for more additional needs. So we're requesting that we actually have at least a. Two, if not the entire five years adopted at that time. And then the thought would be that we'd have the first reading of the capacity fee changes. The capacity fee changes actually are in are required by ordinance or in town code. So there requires an ordinance change and an ordinance change requires two readings. Following that schedule, on the fifth, we'd come back and have the second hearing for the capacity fees, and they become effective thirty days later. Our thought was, even though the rates should be adopted in the end of November, that we'd make sure, make them all effective January fourth. That means that customers will see an increase effective pretty much the beginning of the of the calendar year for the usage of the beginning calendar year. It hit the February bills is initially what we thought. Obviously, there's some discussions of what we're gonna do with capacity fees right now, but that's the schedule we. Were proposing. Next slide, Brian.
It could, before we leave that, could we? It is? The work session?
Yes.
We're gonna, okay, you're gonna address work session on November seventh.
How have you, Carrie? So obviously, we have some fairly significant rate increases. We've had several public hearings here, but I know it's sometimes it's hard to reach out to the customer base. We've been trying to educate and talk to people whenever we have a chance to say, you know, the rates are coming and to watch out for them. So we actually have on the town's website. We're using the the front page, which has news and announcements, but there's already is a website specific to utility and capacity fee rates setup. I believe it's Cave Creek Easy dot org or gov slash utility rates is what it is. And it's one thing to be working on is we've been just patient in this meeting. To get the final numbers together is we actually have been building a rate calculator. So that's something that would be on the website that someone could go in and they could, they could plug in their information. About usage and all that, and they can actually start seeing what the rate impact will actually be specifically.
Estimator.
Estimator, read estimator. It says estimator. Some other things that we plan to do is notes on our utility bills, but those who people who actually get a paper bill from us. You know, there's not much room on there, but that's one way we like talking. There, we actually have a number of our customers who don't get. Paper bills from us. But so what we're likely to do is actually do a direct mailer to all our users. We look to do like an email blast, but then we found out that of our five thousand accounts that we have, we only have good valid email accounts for about three thousand. So is what we thought the direct mailers probably the best way to get out to all our customers, including those that are on the the. P S I or the the automatic billing system. So they'll get a mailer separate from their bill. And if they're on the automatic system, they're not used to getting something from us. So we're hopeful that they'll open it up and they'll say, oh, yeah, there are some rates. Elicit some feedback and have some conversation with their with their customers. We look to actually reach out to our highest water users. At this point, we've collected a, you know, a summary. And it changes month over month, but we have some consistent users, especially in the highest tier of fifty thousand and greater. And our goal will be to reach out to those customers directly, because those are the ones that are going to be directly impacted. An example would be in Desert Hills, our largest water user, Desert Hills is actually the Deer Valley School District. The the water that use for their school, they actually have two, two, two inch meters. So we want to make sure that they're aware of it, because we know this rate will be hitting them mid budget year for them too. So they need to factor that in and also the projections for next year. And then. On November seventh, we'd have another council meeting where we provide input, allow for public input at that meeting. And also let council know what what impact in input we've received as staff before the adoption date. So. That's what we've come up with with our schedule to date. And next slide, Brian. I can answer any questions. Tonight's is item is actually no action item, but it's just for gathering input. And we want to make sure before, since we did gather input at the last meeting when we did the notice of intent. To raise the rates capacity fees, we we heard a little bit more feedback from health. We want to make sure that. You aware that we were making some final changes before the published report went out.
Councilman Morris, that red light's gotta be on, don't it?
We're gonna revamp the tenth street. Rather than just closing. Could you go into that a little more detail why we're not just closing it and using the existing? The new one at the Water Ranch?
Yeah, we thought, Steph, we looked at the contract at the Water Ranch that the the way the contract structured, it'd be difficult. It was actually set aside. The town paid for that. The one at the Water Ranch, but it's actually tied back to the when the West Side web forms, they actually have to reimburse the town for that. We thought it might be hard to co mingle the users and it might be simpler just to actually rebuild the system out there. So we're proposing that.
Second things, are you gonna ask for two years or five years? I, you haven't sounded like that was still up in the air.
We're going to ask for five years. By the five year.
And you're confident enough in your projections that. You can go that long?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, absolutely.
What is the average use in gallons per month of residential customers?
The average in for Cave Creek Water for a single family residential is ten thousand two hundred forty two, and the average meter size is one inch. For multifamily residential ones who cat- categorizes eighteen thousand seven hundred sixty nine. And then for Desert Hills, a single family, it's about the same. It's ten thousand four hundred sixty eight. They typically in Desert Hills, they have the average is actually a three quarter inch meter. They're smaller by one meter size. Is there, so their base rates lower?
Thank you.
Wow. Okay, so. We're, Carrie, you have something, or you may go to public comment now.
Could, could I just go back to to Councilmember Morrison? That would be the minimum amount of money so that the rates should be reviewed annually. Each year, looking at the income coming in and what our expenses are and and as you get to year three and year four, you're looking if something changed. And if you need additional revenue, you have to go back and do a study.
All right, so we're we're down to. Public comment.
David Phelps.
And David, I have my phone here with the stopwatch, so don't waste any time. You got three minutes. Election's over. I'm not gonna cater to you anymore.
Testing, one, two, testing.
Very, very good information. A lot more information to, oh, this David Phelps, Cape Creek resident. Lot more information to review. Appreciate the thoroughness of this. Information provided. When I got into the numbers back in the appendixes regarding the breakdown of the actual costs that we have to provide water. There's a line item showing treatment. And the treatment is called out at one. One point four, one, five, hundred, four hundred and fifteen, hundred thousand, one million, four hundred and fifteen. Hundred thousand. So I took that number and using that number as your treatment cost, and this is just for the Cave Creek. System. I'd like to get. Sean to agree or disagree with the concept that when you take the build volume gallons. Using the cost that we're expected to collect or the cost that we're expected to incur for treatment. Treatment's not specific whether that includes the non revenue water that's. We bring all the way up from the cap and we end up using it in the treatment. Processing water, and then we dump it into the sewer. I don't know if you included the value of that into that treatment. And I'll ask that question of the mayor to Sean.
Sean, did you hear my question?
I did. You're you're on.
You're using his three minutes too, so talk slow.
The the backwash water from the plant. So as you, as we treat water, we do generate waste flow. We actually don't send, we send very little of that to the sewer system. Most of that is actually sent to meet our obligation, contractual obligation with the ranch maniac golf course.
And that's that ten to twelve hours. Every ten to twelve hours, we get a, was it a hundred and eight thousand gallons to flush our?
Oh, yeah. So the the, we have two different treatment tech technologies at the plant. The old West Tech filters require back flushes. There's ten to twelve hour cycle of back flushes. And I forgot the other one they do, but they have to be cleaned out. And then we also have the Paul membrane units, which have cleaning cycles that they go through and have by by possible.
So is that all that water accounted into the treatment cost estimate?
Yeah, because we it is paid, I think it's the treatment cost includes the cost of the delivery of the water, I think, or we broke that out separately, I think, the cost of the water.
So this is really comprehensive. And what's good about this is we're actually able to have. Values to let us know how we do compared to our neighbors. And if you remember back in our Phoenix agreement. We can get water from Phoenix, a limited amount. For, it's about two eighty per thousand. Two dollars and eighty cents per thousand. Delivered to our.
Yeah, for, so we still pay for the C A P water, and I can't remember exactly what the cost is. I think it's two eighty, sounds right. They actually just gave us a new rate because the for the I G A, they can adjust every two years, and they just gave us an adjustment. I can't remember off the top of my head. Sounds close to it.
So my math, and I haven't run this by anybody else, but my math, I'm coming up with us being able to treat our own water at four twenty five. Per thousand. So when we look at our water, our new water rates. That means that every time you see anything less than four twenty five, that's everybody that's getting ten thousand gallons or less of water in the residential rates. It's being paid for by somebody else. In the system. So I'd like to go over the numbers with Sean off, off the timer and off mic, but that's where I'm at with this. So if we're, if we could get to. So if we're, if we could get to purchasing our water. If we could do it, flip a switch tomorrow and do that, we could get all of our water from Phoenix.
If they were interested, that would be an interesting concept. They're not interested.
I, I think that you got to leave it on the table. And I think that we got to keep thinking outside the box because it's almost a half a million dollar issue tonight.
And it's, it's outside the box and outside the bounds of 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 possibilities currently.
We're going to be in this water.
We're not going to give, we're not going to give up. You think, you think they sit on their hands and lean back on their thumbs over there? They don't.
Don't worry, an economic issue will come down Carefree Highway and they're going to want a piece of.
There you go.
All right.
All right. Golly gee, presentation, the only thing left on this thing is adjournment.
Well, I have a comment.
Okay, go ahead, Ed. We don't know many. Okay, go ahead, Tom.
I think with the limited supplies that are coming through C A P and of the Colorado River. I think we tend, we, we really need to do more to price our water so that customers who are using more water are in fact paying more. And as I'm looking at it, the idea that a customer who is using fifty thousand gallons a month is only paying the same rate for the first ten thousand gallons as the person who uses very little water concerns me.
All right, Tom, kind of. I guess you can have that conversation with them tomorrow.
With Sean.
I'm not, and maybe with Mr. Sims, because I'm not sure that that's would be considered fair and equitable under the utility rules.
Thank you.
Do we have a motion to adjourn?
You do now.
All in favor. Thank you.